To Weddington Town Council Regular Meeting, March 8, 2021. And I am honored to have our, one of our local pastors here, Fillmore Strunk of All Saints Anglican. And he is going to pray for us before we open our meeting.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, you sent your Son among us to proclaim the Kingdom of God in cities, towns, and villages, and in lonely places. Behold and visit, we pray, the community of Weddington. Bless the town council as they meet together to review decisions and enact policies for the good of this community. Renew the bonds of charity and uphold our civic life. Send us honest and able leaders. Deliver us from poverty, prejudice, and oppression. That peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with mercy. And at the last, bring us to your holy city, the new Jerusalem, where we shall know perfect unity and peace through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much for that. And we can't wait to see you in person again soon.
We'll have to do that.
Okay. All right, I will open our meeting Monday, March 8, at 7:01. And if we could have the flag, there we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we are having a virtual meeting, so I will go through a roll call to determine quorum. Councilman Probst.
Here.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Here.
Councilwoman Perryman.
Here.
Okay, and I believe Councilman Smith is not in attendance. Am I correct?
You are correct.
Okay, so we have a quorum. Councilman Smith is not in attendance. Okay. The adoption of the agenda. I am not aware of any changes to our agenda. Council, do you all have any changes? Or staff? If not, I will look for a motion to approve. The agenda is presented.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor, Probst?
Aye.
Pruitt?
Aye.
Perryman?
Aye.
Very good. We have adopted our agenda. Council reports. I'll just, I just have a quick comment slash report on our litter sweep. We did have our litter sweep last Saturday, and it was a huge success. We did it a little bit different this time in an effort to try to keep numbers down and kind of have a better idea of who was going to be in attendance. We created a sign up genius. We had 10 groups with six people in each group. Most of them, we did have a Girl Scout group. We had many groups from the high school clubs, and we had extras that showed up. So we had, we had a great turnout. The bags and the trash is, the roads look a lot better. We're going to have to do one again next month. I think in April, we're going to try to plan one. We were playing catch up from, from missing them all last year. But I just wanted to thank all the volunteers that came out and helped. It was a wonderful success. So that's all I have. Probst, do you have anything?
No, I was there that morning, and you're right. I think it did, we had a great turnout. And I do want to just thank everybody that participated. I think everybody was excited about cleaning up the streets. And we appreciate all the, all the participation and the help.
Okay. Yes, very good. Pruitt, do you have anything?
No, just wanted to say thank you to the community who came out and helped with the litter sweep. It really made a big difference, and I appreciate everybody's help.
Okay. And Perryman?
Yes, I guess what I'd like just to touch on a couple of things related to the Western Union Alliance. We did have our last meeting in Wesley Chapel on February 25. And, you know, many people have been putting a lot of work into this group and trying to, to let the county know what our positions are on many things. Not the least of which is our opposition to some of these high-density development propositions that have been put out. And just for the record, I do want to get it down that at the last county commissioners' meeting, they voted five to nothing against the, that high-development, high-density development that was planned for a little donut hole over there in Wesley Chapel. And at the county planning board's last meeting, they voted five to nothing against the Abboton Project, which is down near us, between us and Marvin down there on 12 Mile Creek and Providence Road. So I'm very pleased with that and the fact that the, hopefully the commissioners and the other folks are starting to hear what we're, we're trying to communicate with. And I think that's great news.
Wonderful. Thank you for that, Jeff. Okay, awesome. If nobody has anything else, we will look to, oh, public comments. Sorry, Karen, do we have any public comments that have been submitted?
I just wanted to check one last time. No, we do not.
Okay. Very good. Okay, our public safety report. I believe we have Deputy Crop on.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. My name is Deputy Crop with the Union County Sheriff's Office. During the month of February, we saw an increase in residential homes being broken into into the town of Weddington. Both cases involved homes that were unoccupied at the time of the crime occurred. Both cases, residential alarm systems were in use, causing the offenders to leave the area. We are urging residents to utilize their alarm systems, exterior lighting, and cameras. Also, when traveling out of town, we're asking residents to place their homes on a residential security check. The residential security check form is located on the town of Weddington's website. We are also urging residents to report suspicious vehicles and activities to the Union County Sheriff's Office by calling 911. We did have another breaking and entering into another structure on a vacant piece of property where we were able to identify who that was, and we made an arrest in that case as well. For any homeowners associations that are interested in installing cameras in their neighborhoods, several subdivisions in the town of Weddington are using flock safety cameras that have license plate reader technology or allowing detectives with the Union County Sheriff's Office to access vehicles of interest and have alerts sent to the sheriff's office in real time to assist with investigations where certain vehicles are involved. If you're interested in more information, you can contact the town of Weddington or myself by email through the town of Weddington's website. We are still seeing some additional problems with vehicles crossing the double yellow line when the traffic is backed up from Weddington Elementary School onto 12 Mile Creek. We're monitoring the situation, and we're working with the school resource officers and the school to develop a better solution. I know everybody's trying to figure out what the best solution is, but at this time, I don't know that they've completely solved the problem. So we're trying to ask residents that are in the area that don't have kids in school during school times, just to try to avoid the area. That's all I have for this one.
Very good. Thank you for that. And just kind of going back to what Deputy Crop had mentioned about these cameras. I, you know, if there are neighborhoods, I mean, Deputy Crop and I talked about it today, and these cameras and programs sound like a really great tool. And, you know, if, if at any point, any homeowners associations would like to, you know, sit down with Deputy Crop or anybody that knows about this, you know, he had kind of offered his time and the ability to give knowledge and whatnot about these systems. They're really important. And so I just kind of throwing that out there to anybody that's watching that, that is part of a homeowners association. I hope I didn't speak out of turn for Crop. Okay, all right. Moving on, thank you very much for that. Moving on to our consent agenda. We just have one item. If Lisa, you just want to go over that real quick?
I'm sure. Sure, it's a proclamation 2021-01. It proclaims that April 5th through the 11th is National Public Health Week. And that's all.
Okay. If there are no questions on this, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
All in favor, Probst?
Yes.
Aye.
Pruitt?
Aye.
Perryman?
Aye.
Very good. All right, approval of our minutes. Any changes to our regular town council meeting minutes from February? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve as presented.
Hey, I, this is Leslie. I wasn't at the February meeting. I just wanted to make sure where Walt is filling in for Tammy, that that term expires this year and not next year.
It expires in March of next year.
That's 2021 in the minutes.
So we need to change it to expire next year.
Right.
Now I need to go back and check.
Hang on just a second. I was looking, just looking at him real quick. I don't have, oh, wait a minute. Yeah, expiring. Yeah. Okay, so Leslie, you're saying, yeah, Walt Hogan to serve out the remaining year on Tammy Hectel's term expiring, yeah, he would just be on for 30 days. Yeah.
That's what you meant to do, but.
You know, and it's funny, you can look over and I, yeah. Because I looked at, I looked over him, but yes.
Well, whenever the year first turns, it sometimes you get caught with that.
That's right. Okay, thank you. So.
It'll actually be changed to March 2023. That's when Tammy's term would have ended.
So she had two years left on her term?
Well, when we bumped it, it would have been December 2022, but we bumped it back to March to the next, to the following year. So it's just, it'll be.
Oh, okay, I got you. I got you. Okay. All right. Okay, so if that's all the changes, so I will then look for a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
So moved.
All in favor, Probst?
Aye.
Pruitt?
Aye.
And Perryman?
Aye.
Okay. Discussion of our solid waste and recycling services. All right, Lisa.
Thank you. The town discussed the draft RFP back at our retreat last week. The town attorneys began reviewing the scope of work and the contract for the RFP, and we all feel like we need a little more time. So we have pushed our timeline back. We'll be sending out the RFP April 1st, opening bids around May 7th, and then having a decision on whether to move forward with the contract, probably around June 14th is our June meeting. We do have the option to push back to July. That gives us six months from when we first talked about it in January. But for budgeting purposes, we'll probably need to know by that June meeting or before. We did discuss who we wanted in attendance to open the bids, which included myself, council member Pruitt, and the Union County Solid Waste Director. We'll still need to hear from Marvin and who, who they want at that bid opening. In addition, the attorney suggested we enter into an interlocal agreement with Marvin to cover the bid bond. We are asking for money upfront for them to bid, to make sure it's a good bid. And one of us will have to hold that bond, so we'll need an agreement on how to release it. Two, to go over the bid review process with Marvin. And then three, in the event if there's an issue with the bidder, or there's any legal issues, there's an agreement that the town would pay their own legal expenses. I did, Karen did want to have that ready for you all tonight, but she wasn't able to complete it. So it does look like we will need a special meeting sometime between now and April 1st when we send this out. So I'll have Karen kind of contact you all when we can do a special meeting to discuss both the RFP and that interlocal agreement. I also outlined in the staff report your base bid, which includes garbage service once a week. We have the option of recycling both weekly and biweekly. We'll see prices for both. We have the option of bulk collection, which is your tables and chairs and mattresses. They're going to bid out weekly, biweekly, and monthly. We have yard waste collection weekly. And then household hazardous waste, Christmas tree collection, e-waste, and white good collection at a one-time annual kind of an event. They also have in their municipal-specific logos on the trucks and municipal-specific logos on trash cans and recycling carts. I do think we're leaning towards possibly leasing those carts. Once we, we saw the budget last week at the retreat, that might be a good idea for, to start off on. And then one other option I wanted to add with the uncertainty of DOT continuing their litter sweep. I saw Monroe had in their contract, they maintain their own streets. And so have they, they have their own adopt a street program. And included in their contract is that their hauler is twice a year going around picking up the trash bags after that event. So I might add that as an option for us. I don't know if Marvin will do that as well, but it'll be a Weddington-specific bid. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And you know, Kevin's on the call. If you have any more specific questions with the interlocal agreement.
Okay. I don't have any questions at this point. Does Council Probst, do you have any questions?
Not, not at this time.
Okay. Pruitt?
Not at this time.
Okay, Perryman?
Not right now.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. And, you know, we'll, we'll get ourselves together and get that special meeting when, when Karen gets that situated. So moving on to our UVO. Kevin is on, and I will turn it over to you guys.
Good evening. Lisa, you want me to run with this?
Yes, sir.
All right, very good. Good evening, everybody. I'm pleased to report that we have completed our work with the, at least near-final draft of the Unified Development Ordinance. We finished our time with the planning board and received a recommendation from them at their last meeting to move this forward with you folks. As you probably know, posted on your website right now is, is this draft document and draft form offering, in effect, an extended public comment period to the extent folks would like to read it online and review. And we're at the point where we're ready for you all to roll up your sleeves and just, you know, print this out and take it for some evening reading to work through it. I, I hope you will, will find it a lot easier to follow and read than the current ordinances. I'll just share for the public as it's listed on the website. And as we spoke about back when you all authorized this project, our goal is to have this new unified ordinance comply with the relatively new state statutes on planning and zoning that were adopted by the state legislature a little while back. That's the Chapter 160D that you hear folks referring to. And then, as I mentioned, hopefully a much more user-friendly document for everybody, the public, property owners, staff, and you folks. So I think what we would practically look for as, as next steps, Lisa and I would, would like to suggest that we schedule a special meeting and work session with you folks sometime this month, where we could, you know, maybe take a couple hours similar to what we did at the start of the project, and I could really walk you all through this document in some detail sometime this month. The formal, the schedule we're on right now is we'll advertise for a formal public hearing in front of you folks for citizen comment at your meeting in April, with the possibility that you all could vote to approve it as early as that April meeting. I'd like to think that, that the public will be pleased with it, and you all will. But if there's questions or comments, we can certainly take a little extra time after that meeting and defer a decision for 30 days if we need to. We have time. But my thought would be to have a work session in March. So you all go into that April meeting very informed, and all of your questions are answered in detail in advance of the meeting with the public. So Lisa, I don't know if you have anything to add to that. If it's some form or fashion of a, of a meeting, if that's a work session kind of Zoom meeting with all of us, maybe, maybe we do both of these items together one, one day, bid day or something. But I'll, I'll leave it to you all to, to decide and look at schedules.
Okay, Lisa, do you have?
No, but I do think we can do like a work session and knock these out in the same, same afternoon or morning.
Yeah. Yeah, that's probably not, not a bad idea. And you guys can just keep us posted on the timelines and when everything gets ready, and then we can get, get in touch with everybody, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
But please, before that April meeting, try to get through it, read through it, ask questions. Because the plan is the same night as that public hearing. So we have it on the website, so the, the public has plenty of time to kind of review it and, and see it. So there's no surprises, so.
And our, that meeting is the 12th, because the first meeting is Monday. It is Easter Monday. Right? Okay. So sometime between now, the week of the 15th, 22nd, or 29th is really where we're looking, because much after that, you get into Easter. So and then, really in the next probably two weeks.
Yeah.
Okay, realistically. Okay. Does anybody have any questions or concerns with that timeline?
If you'd like me to print it out for you, it's a hefty document. Send me an email, and I will have copies in your box.
Okay.
It is hefty, but I will point out it's less words than the state statute and the current ordinances by a good bit. So we, we have, we have, we have done less rather than more in that regard for volume, so.
Yeah, it's not as hefty as what we used to have, so. And that's awesome. So Will, if nobody has any concerns with that timeline, Lisa and Kevin, and, you know, they'll, they'll get their ducks in a row and look at the calendar and kind of come up with some options for everybody. Does that sound okay? All right. New business. Deal Road and Highway 84. There's been some discussions. I, you know, I know several of us have discussed the delay in some of the projects, you know, Deal Road, Providence Road. I mean, it kind of, you know, we, we have some intersections that, that can be dangerous intersections. And a handful of those intersections are on these railroad and Providence Road and some of these projects that have been delayed. So, you know, we would like to look into potential options that the town can maybe utilize some of our infrastructure funds or try to do something to, you know, as minimal as we can, improve some of these intersections and make them a little bit safer. So that's kind of the, the crux of this Deal Road and 84 agenda item. And Lisa has done some work, so I will turn the floor over to you and let you kind of go over what you've got.
So I received two bids, one's from Kimley Horn, one's from RS&amp;H, looking at the potential intersection improvement options. They're going to start with a, a traffic analysis and.
Can you put, can you put that on the screen? Do you have this?
Well, I have the, I have the two.
Just, just to have something, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So they, they start with the traffic analysis and then a signal warrant study. The evaluation includes both signalized and unsignalized conditions with a turn lane along the southbound approach of Deal Road. Once the analysis is complete, a preferred improvement alternative is chosen. The contractor will do a conceptual design and cost estimate. And that enables us to apply for DA funds through the CRTPO. And if it warrants, maybe some spot safety funds, with the intent of knowing that this is going to be hopefully improved in the next 10 to 12 years with the railroad extension. So we need to keep that in mind. So the lump sum fee from Kimley Horn is $11,400. And then RS&amp;H is $23,320. The biggest difference between the two, I had NC DOT take a look. And since you've seen this at the retreat, Kimley Horn has upped their price a little bit. The warrants, there's nine different warrants that needed to be studied. So the price went up with Kimley Horn to include those. The other big difference is the traffic analysis. Most of their cost, of RS&amp;H's costs are in this analysis. All the other numbers compare a little bit better. So I do want to go over that one more time with NC DOT, if we're not in a rush. If, if the Kimley Horn price and scope is good for them, I'm seeking approval tonight to go into contract authorization, to go into contract with Kimley Horn, given that their fee is less, and confirming that NC DOT is okay with that scope of work, if that's satisfactory to them. If not, I'll be coming back to you guys again at our either work session meeting or April meeting.
Okay. How are we budget-wise for that, Leslie?
We, we should be in pretty good shape because we have money in the infrastructure budget that is unlikely to be spent before the end of the year.
Okay. Okay, does it count? Do you guys have any questions? Anne, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Okay. Janice?
Not at this time.
Okay. And Mr. Perryman?
The, the only thing I would ask is, is Leslie, do you have a number that we should go with as a not-to-exceed amount? I know, if I understood you correctly, Lisa, you said you were going to go back and talk with DOT and that, and that the other folks' number had gone up slightly. And if, and if, I would say if we're good with a not-to-exceed number, and Leslie, you say we're good with that, then, you know, then I guess we could go ahead and proceed.
Yeah, I think the problem, my only problem I'm having with that is if DOT is not in alignment with the costs, is the, if the option is $23,000, do, do you want it to come back before you for that? Are you looking for a not-to-exceed on this particular contract only or for the study in general?
I was referring to this, just this contract only, since it was the one we were preferring, it looks like.
Yeah. Then I would, I would probably say not to exceed like $15,000.
Okay.
That gives you like a good 10% to 20% wiggle room in there.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to, we're going to move forward with the Kimley Horn. And is that what I'm understanding?
Yep, so it'd be a motion to authorize staff to enter into contract for an amount not to exceed $15,000. Yep. So it'd be a motion to authorize staff to enter into contract for an amount not to exceed 15,000. And confirmation from NC DOT that it covers the, the analysis needed to be able to get it permitted or in for funding.
Okay. Okay. So I will look for a motion to enter into contract with Kimley Horn.
So moved.
And not to exceed for the amount, not to exceed $15,000 and Lisa, I don't, I don't.
Confirmation that the scope is good with NC DOT.
Confirm, confirmation that, that, that the scope, that, that DOT, um, is, is okay with the scope of work.
So moved.
All in favor, Probst?
Aye.
Pruitt?
Aye.
Perryman?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Preliminary budget. And the capital improvement plan. Leslie?
Oh, this one's going to be fun, isn't it? And we, I gave you a, a real brief overview at the retreat. Not a whole lot has changed on that at this particular point in time, other than to have some numbers that have, um, come up like for the fire during the retreat. Um, what I've done is we still haven't heard from the county, the final revow numbers. So I'm, I'm hesitant to, to get too deep into things until I know what that is. So I've kind of done it high level where I looked at what we had for this year, backed out the big ticket items that, you know, were one-time things, like any kind of road projects, the park, um, the, the UDO, those kinds of things, just to come up with where I would think we would be on a, on an operating basis. And that's coming up with revenues of around 614,000 that we have to play with. And then at the, um, bottom half of the page are all the potential things that, that we would be spending that on. And, um, a huge one that came in that I was not expecting was the enhanced fire service. That was 173,000. If we, um, do do trash, um, that would be another like 206, 210,000. Assuming, um, Lisa, you might need to, um, just verify for me. We're talking that we would only be doing it for the fourth quarter of fiscal year 22, right?
Yep.
Yeah. So that would be, um, one quarter's worth. We have, um, La Bella Consulting, you know, we, I guess it Gary, is that the guy who does the? Yeah. We've been spending a lot more on him recently. So we've spent about $3,000 more a month than what we are currently budgeted to spend. So, um, we get reimbursed for, from the developers for other costs, but not for him. So I need to, um, up the La Bella consulting budget for next year. And I've got that in about 30,000. Landscaping, we had talked about doing improvements to the medians and roundabouts. I've got 22,500 in for that. Consulting services, that is to do more of these intersection improvement studies. Park design, anything related to water sewer and, you know, some miscellaneous other studies that always come up during the year. DOT projects, I've got 40,000 in for Deal Road, 35,000 in for a stoplight at Antioch. And then, um, personnel costs potentially up to 35,000. That's based on COLA and merit increases and potential benefit adjustments based on the changes in the handbook. And then I still need to hear from the deputy sheriff's office, but I'm putting in 10,000 for an increase for them. And if you add all that up, that will use up our 614,000. And then we still have some other items to potentially fund being the Tilly Morris Roundabout, the Potter and Forest Lawn Intersection and to do any, um, additional construction on the park. And we do have the fund balance, assigned fund balance of 805,000 that we could pull for, for that. If we have to purchase trash cans, that causes us a problem. So at two cans a house, estimated $50 a can, that's almost a half million in trash cans. So that, if we could lease it, that would be better to spread the cost. We could potentially, we have to buy and potentially get a loan, take out and spread the cost. So, um, it's probably a little more than we want to appropriate fund balance for, based on our policies. So we'll have to, to really look into that one. Um, then, and this gets kind of down to the very bottom of the page, down into the five-year capital improvement plan. These are other costs, things down the, down the pipe that we will, we've talked about wanting to do. And we need to be thinking about if we do them, how will we pay for them? And those are other road projects. We've got Antioch, Beulah Church, 12 Mile Newtown, 12 Mile Beulah Church. Additional park construction costs, depending on how you guys want to build out that park. One thing, um, uh, we talked about doing maybe some pocket parks. We still hang, have hanging over our head, you know, possible litigation settlement in the lawsuit. So we need to be wary of, of how much we draw down our fund balance until that's, um, taken care of. And then, um, one thing that's not on that capital improvement plan would be if we do do trash for a full year, that would be, um, going forward 53 or 23 forward, another $650,000 a year. So you're looking about a little over, um, $850,000 to $875,000 a year to do trash. So which in the grand scheme of things is about the same as fire. So if we give fire back to the county at some point, that could potentially wash, but in the circumstances that we don't give it back, then we're looking at really having to do something with the tax rate. If we're going to do both. So. If you look at the five-year plan, we, we list out all the potential capital projects that we're talking about. Funding in the next five years. Some of them, road projects are really hard because you just don't know what the timing of them is going to be. You can almost be guaranteed that it's at, at least a year later than what you think. But we've, we've gotten scheduled out for, for five years. Um, Lisa helped. Did, did a great job saying when she wanted to do what. And I show you in the first column, what we've got in assigned fund balance now. And we had railroad money. We had, um, a lot of park money. And I kind of moved that money around to get you enough money to do Potter and Forest Lawn this year. That, that project went, went up pretty significantly. So, and then, um, that pretty much wipes out what we already have assigned. Do you need to be looking into your unassigned fund balance? And our policy limits how much of that we can spend. And I'm showing you what it says we can, the minimum we can have is a million six. We can only draw down almost 500,000 at any one point in time next year. And as we draw that down, that drawdown number will get smaller and smaller because it's you got, you got to, you got to save some. So. But it's just, this is just to give you an idea of what's out there. Think about what you do and do really want to do, what you don't want to do, what you want to put off doing. Whether you want to find some alternate fundings. Plan for the future. I mean, like if we draw down our fund balance, we need to have a plan for how to replenish it. So, and at the, the spending levels that we're doing this year and next year, we are not going to be able to put much back in there. And unless we have projects like Tilly Morris and things that just get put off. And it's not that you're not spending it, you're just not spending it now. So. Um, one project that's not on here, I know we talked about at the retreat was doing like mast irons and things for the stoplights. Those are, are not inexpensive. So if, if we want to consider those, we can add those to the project list. And then at the bottom of that page just shows you, um, ongoing maintenance for different things. Like if we build a park, we're going to have to maintain a park. Town hall, you know, at some point we, we put aside a little bit of money each year so that when there's a big painting or roof or something like that, we've got, got money set aside to pay for that. Um, the medians, you know, we need to replace plants. We, every other year we got a mulch. So, um, as we do road projects, we need to get the design consultants in. So we, we need money for master plans, design plans, that kind of thing. And so they wouldn't be a capital project, but their ongoing costs as a result of capital projects. So that's what, what those numbers down there are a guess at how much those things might cost. So, um, I don't think that we're in a position based on what we've got going on. You know, it's obviously, we have to talk about the, the, the big things, the fire, the trash and the roads. And that's what's going to affect what we do with the tax rate this year going forward. We're getting the revow. If we can absorb a lot of that this year with the, with the revow and the fact that, uh, trash would not be a full year. But it, it's a, it's a temporary, temporary fix. To be budget neutral, if we wanted to not raise taxes at all, it would probably be, we'd drop our taxes to 4.2, 4.3 cents instead of 5.2. But we, um, we'd be operating in the, the negative based on this particular budget. So let me know what you guys think about it. Let me know what you guys want to do.
And this is like unrealistic, but it's a start of a capital improvement plan. And my goal for you all is to by the end of this fiscal year is to adopt something like this that lays out the projects for the next five years. Like under park design and construction, maybe we can do a hundred thousand dollars worth of projects every year until we build it out to, to what we want. So I just want, I mean, some of these intersection improvements are just not going to happen year two, year three, year four, the rate DOT is, is kind of pushing things back. So we need to start thinking about the list of projects and realistically what year we're going to, we're going to do them. And then the hope is to, to actually adopt this and, and need um, maybe a policy to go with it of how to amend the CIP. Either by council vote or I don't want to get into a whole ordinance, but it, it's, it's still flexible and you can move money around as you need it, but it, it takes a council to vote. Instead of just saying, well, now we need land. Well, we should be saving for land if, if that comes up. So. To be continued, but we really need you guys to kind of sit down and understand this.
Okay. Are there any questions? Uh, Pruitt, you have any questions?
No, not right now. Thank you all together, Leslie.
Yeah. I, I think the big thing right now is, um, honestly is the, the fire. I need to know what you want to do about, about that. By not, you know, like right this minute, but by next month.
Enhance fire or?
Yeah, the enhanced fire.
And when does that pay, when does that take, go into effect again? Do you know?
That goes into effect, um, it was in a nine, nine months of the year. So I think it went, goes into effect in, um, October.
Uh, yeah, it was the end of the year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Personally, I'd like to have a special meeting just to discuss the fire. It could be a Zoom meeting, but I think that we all need to really just go in depth on that enhanced fire service and, and discuss the locations and possible some kind of cost sharing with maybe Marvin. Just, that's a lot of money. And we don't want to raise our taxes right now. But we have a tight budget.
Okay. Um,
is that, is that part of it? That's just our share, the 173. Aren't they spreading it out between the different departments like Marvin and Wesley Chapel?
I think the county will pay the rest because they're the other funding source. So.
So it's just us and the county?
Yes. Yes.
Why is, why are they not looking at Wesley Chapel and Marvin?
Cause Wesley Chapel and Marvin pay a fire tax.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. I thought about that. Yeah.
Okay.
But those, but. Did those fire charges go up?
Those locations are going to be shared by Weddington. The enhanced locations will be shared by those other municipalities.
So is the, do you know if the fire tax is going to be increased to take into consideration the enhanced fire service?
I, I asked Stephen, um, when, at the, the retreat. And he said that the tax rate would not give them more revenue that it, that's based on what they ask for, I guess, versus what the actual tax rate is. I, that might be, you know, like with Jana saying, we might need to understand how all that's going to work better. I know it's very confusing with the split in the funding between the county and us. And identifying what applies to just Weddington versus what applies to the county. And I did ask Stephen, I'm like, if, if we said no, you know, what would, would happen to the, the proposed, um, enhancement? And he said that he thought it would still go forward. And I'm a little confused because he's, you know, that's when he said, you know, that we wouldn't get it, but I don't know how we wouldn't get it, you know? So, I mean, if the call comes in, are they going to say, no, don't go? Cause they're in Weddington. I mean, I, it's all that particular service, I, I'm not really clear on how it would function.
And I, I don't see how it sounds like, I mean, it looks like we're footing the bill for the whole program for all of Wesley Chapel.
Yeah. Well, I know that the, the whole program costs way more than that. So.
But the locations, but the locations, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, you were right that, but wasn't he applying for all kinds of grants and everything as well to help fund that? I thought he had mentioned that.
He said 35% of the cost is allocated to the town. And that's, you know, that, um, allocation percentage that he calculates to for the overhead and things like that, about how much of, of their services, I guess, go towards Weddington versus the, the rest of the, um, county. It is based on salaries. And it's 10 months of service is what he said. And it's all payroll. It's, um, $160,000 in payroll, $13,000 in payroll taxes. So. And I forget, did he say it was like four EMS at the station? So.
It was going to be two apiece.
Yeah.
And the locations were?
The locations, if I remember correctly, were going to be the main Wesley Chapel station over there where the. The locations, if I remember correctly, were going to be the main Wesley Chapel station over there where the target is.
Right.
And then the new station that integrated over there off of Ray Road.
And that's what my point is, is that that station's going to serve a lot of Union County and a lot of Marvin.
Right, but I would say that Stephen is telling you that's why we're getting charged thirty-five percent. So, because they'll service us thirty-five percent of the time.
But they're not going to have anything at the Hemby Road Station?
Not the enhanced.
No, the main Wesley Chapel, the main Wesley Chapel would.
Anyway, I think it behooves us to have a special, just heart-to-heart conversation about the whole, because that was a number that kind of just, I was like, I was like Leslie, I just was kind of surprised. We just don't have the revenues to keep doing this further and further and getting higher and higher taxes in fire speeds. It's just unsustainable, really.
Okay. So.
I mean, that's just my opinion.
No, that's fine. We'll talk with Lisa and Leslie and you guys, I mean, do y'all want to consider at some point doing a Zoom call, doing a meeting, a special meeting at town hall, or however we want to do it to go over this stuff?
I think we need to.
Okay.
I think so.
Okay. So, we'll add one more to our.
Well, it can be the same day.
Yeah, it's okay. I mean, that's, this is important stuff. This is stuff we've got to.
Well, this budget is really, I mean, you know, Leslie's not the only person looking at this budget saying, how is the town going to keep this tax rate and do all these things that the town wants to do? And I mean, I think that it doesn't just have to be a fire meeting, it's just a budget meeting.
Budget meeting, yeah. I agree.
That number is pretty big, and it was, it was a lot more than I expected. And I don't see how we can sustain our tax rate, and I don't want to increase our taxes.
Yeah.
No, I agree. Maybe we can, you know, have some questions, you know, maybe we can get some answers, you know, before the meeting. Maybe we can find out.
Yeah, I know Stephen said that he was more than welcome to come back and talk about it, so.
Well, and I do think it's important, you know, for the folks that watch the meeting, don't have any idea what this enhanced fire service is. And I do think it's important, at least, to have him at a meeting so he can go over and explain that. So they will at least, at a minimum, understand that. And we can set, I do think we need to set a budget meeting up. And we can delegate a meeting specifically to these numbers and getting through it. So I'm fine with that. We will get Lisa and I'll go and get with Leslie and we'll get all our heads together and get some dates for everybody and be in touch. How about that?
Should be hearing, we usually hear from the sheriff's department and the county. They've got to be getting those numbers out.
They are, they are out, Leslie.
They are.
My mom got hers today.
I got mine today.
I probably got mine too.
I haven't checked my mail, so maybe I've got, so I'll check with Kim and make sure that she's got a heads up as soon as the town's numbers in total, if she gets something to let me know what it is. And, you know, from what they were saying, it's likely that for Weddington, it's a thirty percent increase, you know? And that'll give us, you know, more revenue to play with, you know?
Based on what I got, it's a good hit. It was a pretty decent chunk. So.
One thing too, also that I wanted to throw out there, anytime we do, there's a tax rate or a revow, it does affect the tax rates that get charged around the county, which in turn will play with into the local option sales tax, because it's distributed based on ad valorem taxes. So if our tax rate goes down and everybody else's goes up, we'll end up getting less. If ours goes up and Maria else goes down, we might end up getting more. So it's, I've got us in here at kind of a flat level based on what we're getting now. That, it likely won't change very much in the next fiscal year because it's on like a nine-month delay. So it wouldn't happen till fourth quarter of next year that some of those adjustments for the changes in tax rates will play in. But they could play in. I just want to make you aware of that.
All right. We will, we'll get something lined up and get a meeting scheduled. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right. Lisa, you got an update?
Yes, I wanted to thank Liz and Janice for their help with the litter sweep. It was very successful and well appreciated throughout the community. Liz and her son were out there picking up the bags even after the event, so I wanted to thank her for that. We continue to plan our upcoming Easter event. It's going to be March twenty-seventh, has a rain date of March twenty-eighth. It'll be here at town hall. We did start the advertisement. It's a ticketed event with social distancing, so make sure if you want to go that you sign up with your family. Found out today, Avinton Apartments withdrew their rezoning application.
Oh, really?
So that's, that email came in about five o'clock this afternoon, so. Interesting to hear. And we have a new, well, an old subdivision coming back, Weddington Glen. It's behind the Hemby Road Fire Station. Their preliminary plat has expired, so we will have that coming back through the process, which Leslie, for erosion control fees, will get about eight thousand dollars there of income with that plan. And today is International Women's Day. I'd like to recognize our three elected officials on here tonight that help run this town. Mayor Callis, Councilwoman Probst, then Pruitt. These ladies are wonderful leaders who I admire and do what it takes to help make Weddington the town it is. Also wanted to praise my staff, who's full of women, Leslie, Karen, who are on here tonight, our clerk and our finance officer, and then Janet Pirano, our permit tech, and Kim, our tax collector. I appreciate how hardworking they are and happy, happy National, International Women's Day.
Well, thank you.
That is all.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that. Code enforcement, I don't know if anybody has any questions. It's in the packet. I hear no comments or questions. So we will move on. Leslie, you're back.
You've got the February financial statements, monthly financial statements in the packet. Look at them and enjoy them. It's the last time you will see them in this format because we did go live with our new financial software effective March first. Kim and Janet and I will be having fun learning and playing with that for the next few months. But payroll and finance are live. Taxes and construction permits will come on over the next couple of months. So have patience with us if you call and ask for something, because we may not be able to do it as quickly as we used to. The audit for fiscal year 2020 has finally been approved by the local government commission. So now that we're wrapping up 2021, we will get the auditor to come in and present the 2020 financial statements next month. And along with all the budget stuff and getting towards the end of the year, I will be doing a budget amendment for the current year. It's not in, reflected in the monthly financials for this month, but I will try to get something together to present to you next month. And that's all I got.
Okay. Okay. Transportation, I don't have any transportation reports. There was a pothole. Lisa, that pothole on Tilly Morris is filled. That's not really my transportation report, but that's good news because we've had several complaints of people hitting it and destroying cars and tires and wheels. And somebody rode past it today. There was a real bad section, a real bad pothole on Tilly Morris. So that will be my transportation report. But no, I don't really have anything. Lisa, do you have anything to add?
I don't.
Okay. All right, council comments. Probst.
And speaking of that, I just filled out a document online. You can go to the, I don't have the link, but it's the Union County DOT Department. And I just filled out an application for them to fix the rut in the major curve that's in front of my house, because we've had people actually get in that rut off of eighty-four and flip cars. So there is a location on the Union County DOT site that you can actually ask people to actually come fill in a pothole if you'd like.
I think we actually have it posted on our website now.
I was going to say, yeah, I think it is, because that's.
Okay, good. Well, then I could have gone to the town's website and filled that in. But anyway, I'm waiting for them to fill in the rut on eighty-four. But no, I just want to thank everybody that was in attendance tonight and thank everybody again for coming out for the litter sweep. We appreciate all the residents for the help. And the town does look nicer. And hopefully next month, we'll have more attendance and get a little bit more cleaned up. Thank you, everybody.
Very good. Pruitt?
I just wanted to thank everybody who's tuned in tonight. And Janice, I actually filled out the same kind of form for, actually on Tilly Morris, for that whole section.
I think that's scheduled, actually, Lisa, is it not? That is, we got a maintenance log, an updated maintenance log, and checking for what upcoming roads were on the maintenance rotation. And the only one
Yep, for the year.
Is, I think, is that, Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, it's from the Union County, for the Weddington city limit line up to the future roundabout. How far does that go?
It's Rose Hill is where it needs to go to, yeah.
Right, I think it goes up in that area. But, so yeah.
Project in Weddington for resurfacing for the next year. So all the subdivision roads and all that are not on there. So.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Perryman, do you have any?
Well, just congratulations again on the successful litter sweep. I think that's awesome. Just a heads up to the folks that are tuning in, our next Western Union Alliance meeting is going to be the twenty-fifth, I believe, of March, and it will be at Weddington Town Hall, yep, at four o'clock in the afternoon. And then finally, just a note on that county meeting that some of us will be attending on Thursday, where we'll be talking about the, I guess, one of the topics is, our biggest topic is going to be the water issue. Infrastructure issue. The county commissioner is going to be there, and all the towns are going to have their chance to make a little presentation. And that will be this coming Thursday. That's all I got.
Okay. All right. Well, I don't, I don't really have anything. I thank those that have tuned in. Thank you to our wonderful staff for all your hard work and my fellow elected officials for your dedication to this town. And that's it. So I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor, Probst?
Aye.
Pruitt?
Aye.
And Perryman?
Aye.
Very good. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night. Thanks, everybody.
Good night. Boy, Jack, you were a pistol. Thank God I had a lot of that.